July 16th, 2013, a special meeting to order. At this time, those who are able, if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Shirley, Vice Mayor, Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here. We'll move on to Administration.
Item 2.1, Response to Celine County's Counter-Proposal Regarding the Health Department.
Mr. Gage.
Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. One thing I will like to add is, we, this is all hot off the press, so we'll have additional copies coming down as soon as they become off the press for the rest of the folks. So, we weren't able to get as much information out as we'd like to, just simply from the time that we had yesterday to today in preparation. What we have for you is Resolution Number 13-7022, and it's a response to Celine County's rejection of the City of Salinas, Celine County Building Proposal, and also of Celine County's respective counter-proposal. Just a quick background summary, we won't get into that deep, but as most everyone knows now, the condition of the existing Health Department building roof has been a major concern, both for the city and county, for at least a year. On July 1st, the city submitted to Celine County proposal to build a new building on the existing site, and took an action, providing legal notice to Celine County of dissolution of the current Joint Board of Health. On July 2nd, Celine County rejected the city's proposal via news release, and on July 9th, Celine County by letter provided a counter-proposal, asking the city to fund $500,000 towards the repair of the existing building, and also giving up its interest in remaining fund balances that will be available at year-end upon the final dissolution of the Joint Board of Health. Presuming the Board of Health dissolves, you have remaining fund balances there, the county chose to ask us to give up our interest in that. Attached is a resolution for the City Commission consideration that responds to the counter-proposal, and I'll just hit the points very quickly. The city in these, in this resolution would agree to provide $500,000 towards Celine, to Celine County for the building roof repair, and release PICO Engineering for Design Services if Celine County agrees to declare that it has no further legal claim against the city regarding the matter. Recognize that that's contrary to the decision of the City Commission and comments regarding that matter, because we know, we vocalize that we believe that that's not a good use of public funds for, based on the age of the building, quite honestly, more than anything else, and potential cost of that building, but we do believe that it should resolve the matter. Second, the city will retain its full interest in the balance of funds remaining upon dissolution of the Joint Board of Health, if in fact that occurs. Quite honestly, I can't see any reason why you would choose to not keep your full interest there. It doesn't make any sense to me. Third, absent an agreement for a new building, the city still believes that selection of a, or does believe that selection of a suitable existing building from within the community that can be reconfigured for Health Department needs is the next best, long-term, and most cost-effective alternative. So, if a new building is not something Celine County will agree to, for whatever the reason, this asserts that if we can find the proper building in the community that meets the most of the core needs, that that's still a better option than placing, you know, dollars into that existing building. The city asks Celine County to consider continuing to work with us to find a suitable building and site, and to remain in a joint Health Board arrangement for the future, recognizing that this request is not linked to our agreement to repair the existing roof. And I think that's the key, is that this, this is, in essence, is saying, they'll take care of the existing roof, they fix it, they can ask the Health Department, or place the Health Department back in there, or not. And so, you can take care of the roof, if they have that, any other needs that they'd like to use that building for, they could do that, if we could work together to find a better location for the Health Department. So, I think that's an important aspect. If the county should not choose to work with the city to find a suitable building and site within the community, the city expresses its intent to reduce our final mill levy, that's on August 25th, to offset the budget cost reduction that we would have for public health care services while retaining amounts sufficient to fund animal control and shelter services. I think it's important to note, too, for those in unincorporated Celine County, once Celine County chooses to increase their mill levy to take on the Health Department individually, if, at least to take it on at the current level, that would be a doubling of that portion of the mill levy, the portion that's attributable to those, to the health care, not to the full mill levy, but to, to the public health care services. In addition to whatever margin, I believe that there was discussed at the recent Health Board meeting that suggested their cost of health insurance was significantly higher than the city's, and those employees came over that that would increase their cost. I think it was over roughly a quarter of a million dollars, which is about a half a mill, from their perspective. So, whatever that is, they've intended to adjust that, but there is an impact to unincorporated residents, residents in the unincorporated area. The fiscal impact is, as we can see, is a half a million dollars at this time, based on the obligation. Certainly, we don't know, and there's not been a final agreement on a future building, so, once we know that, we'll know what the fiscal impact is. I do believe it will be somewhere in the middle between spending a million dollars to repair the existing building, if that were the choice, or spending upwards of, you know, roughly up to four million dollars on a new building. I think, without question, the, another building in town would be somewhere in the middle. And I think this really suggests a good compromise. In this case, the city doesn't link any longer, there's no linkage between the existing building repair, that issue, and a new location. So, quite honestly, it frees Celine County up to choose the best alternative, and what we believe is best for the long-term interest of our community health, and also the most cost-effective approach to the long-term needs in the, in the building. And so, with that, we have a couple of options, they're very clear in this case, either approve Resolution 13-7022 or not. Staff would be happy to answer any questions, and I do believe you have some interested parties in the, in the room that might have some thoughts on the matter as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gage. Any questions or comments for staff?
I have a quick question. On, on item point, on item number five here, on the, on our response to the counter-proposal, which is about the mill levy, is that, please bear with me, I'm kind of reading a lot of this as a first time as well, so. Is that to, I know they were, part of their counter-proposal was to say, we're gonna, we're gonna raise, we need to know if we need to raise ours, or they're planning on raising theirs, and ours is already, we had already planned on doing that, because our intent is to have a joint Health Department, so we don't want to, we don't want to just lower it because we don't, we don't have the ability to go in and raise it once we lower it.
Correct.
So, what is the implication of saying, "We want to work this out as a, as an inter-local agreement for the first of the year, and we want to make sure we have that money available in there." How does that play out as far as our budgeting, and can't really speak to theirs, but...
There's a few ways. Right now, our budget would leave our mill levy the same, and when we have our budget hearing, and we file the, for the public, we have the public hearing and file the budget information, we will show that mill levy the same, in essence, as it is today. We have the ability to lower it, we can't raise it, which we wouldn't intend to, but we have the ability to lower it between that time and August 25th, when we certify it. And so, Celine County's in the same position, they'll have a public hearing, they'll establish their, their initial budget numbers and their, their tax levy, and they have an opportunity to lower theirs as well. So, they could estimate whatever their increase would be countywide, and they could go ahead and, in their public hearing and their document, establish that today, which I anticipate, based on their correspondence, that they will. If there's agreement between now and August 25th, they feel that the relationship can continue in some form, they could certainly reduce it right back down for final certification. And of course, we're talking about the mill levy for 2014, wouldn't affect anything this year. If, well, that's one option. Another option, let's say that they leave theirs the same, we leave ours the same, but there's still disagreement, and then Celine County's wondering, "Oh, no, our mill levy isn't sufficient enough to handle the costs of the function, and yet we have the full function in 2014." Well, in that case, because of the timing of the mill levies, I would think that the city could enter into an agreement to simply transfer the same amount of funds that we would expect to, for community health services, whatever that net would be today, we could transfer that to the county, and then deal with the mill levy the next year. Therefore, there's, there would be no change in anybody's mill levy related to the Health Department, and we could just do a, you could do it through a budget arrangement, that would be probably the most proper thing to do, if in fact, Celine County left our mill levy the same, and we still didn't have agreement, our mill levy was the same. So, we could do that to make sure that we didn't, in essence, stiff them. I don't think that's our intent. And then, we could adjust the mill levies for the year 2015. So, really, those are probably the two options. I think, for the taxpayers out there, I don't know necessarily that you'll see the cities, if in factors of dissolution, the city's reduction and Celine County's increase being exactly the same. Our reduction would be based on no longer spending roughly $770,000 towards that function, but we would retain whatever would be reasonable to have a municipal animal control and shelter function. As you know, we own the property and the building, and I believe most of the assets associated with the animal shelter, so that's not really an issue, it's the operation. And certainly, if Celine County would not intend, and they've, I think they've communicated, they would not intend to have a countywide animal control function, makes sense, the city would take that on as a municipal function, and we need to retain enough out of that reduction of mill levy to cover that. On the other hand, Celine County would not have that, which is only 15 percent. For them, it's only 15 percent, for us, it's 85, so it's not a big deal for them. They would take on the full health function, they would have to determine, one, at what level are they going to budget the health function? They can go more than two mills total, which if they kept the funding at the current level that both parties funded today, it would be a total of more than two mills for them. They can do that, at points in the past, they've said that they cannot, but they can, it's just subject to a protest petition. On the presumption that tax levy is somewhat offset, one wouldn't expect that to be a concern whatsoever in, in the county, but they'll have to decide at what level they would want to fund it. Are they going to reduce positions, are they going to eliminate positions, are they going to absorb positions of a roughly 60-person function? That's, one could question how they'd have the time to do that, but if they can, they can. And then, so that's one of their decisions that they will have to make with regards to funding, and then, if there is an increase in health insurance costs, which they, I believe asserted at the Health Department Board Meeting, then that would be an extra cost they would take on, because currently, the Health Department employees are on the city's health plan. And so, I think that was a surprise to learn there'd be a significant increase in health costs, just simply by moving from one plan to another. But, if it is, it is, and that's something they have to deal with. So, they'll have to take all those things into, and into consideration, decide what they would, what they need their mill levy to be to fund it. So, we don't know exactly what that number is, I know we're working to calculate what that is, and we'll see, but really, quite honestly, the best thing that can happen is that there can, if there is going to be agreement to reconstitute the Health Board in a, in a local agreement format, it really needs to occur, and have action taken prior to August 25th, it would just simplify life tremendously for everyone.
Thank you. That, the part of my question that I really wanted to hit on was the fact that our intent all along on this has been that what's important, at least to this Commissioner, and I believe this Board, is the services that are provided to 55,000 residents, 47,000 of which are in the City of Salina, that we are responsible for making thoughtful, deliberate, and careful decisions on their behalf, as well as 60 employees that, quite frankly, in an organization as well-respected, and is, that functions as well as they do, and the employees that would leave because of whether they're asked to leave, or whether they choose to. Just concerned that we lose such a large amount of human capital and institutional knowledge there that we cannot replace. So, having said that, that's kind of where we're, where I think we come from as a Board, we want to do everything that we can do to make sure that these services are provided to not only the citizens of Salina, but Salina County as well. We backed off of, don't want to say backed off, but we, we presented our proposal, what we felt was the best of the five options that were provided for us at the time. They counter, their counter-proposal was the option that they feel is the best option. In a spirit of saying, what's really important to us, and a new building isn't important to us, a functioning Health Department that is the best that it can be is what's important to us. So, we're trying to do and compromise to the extent that says, "We want to have an interlocal agreement put together by the end of the year." What do we have to do? We felt like we had to pull off of our proposal and make a compromise, and say, we're not only saying that we want to work together, we're, we're, we're showing that, so...
Commissioners, I think one thing that's important to note, too, is that when we, when we look at this, there's a lot of ways to look at it, but, and I know you vocalized the importance to the community, and one aspect there that's related to the community is the, the hazard that's posed by the current roof condition. And that's why there are barricades out there, that's why the building official is determined it's a dangerous structure. And I believe that we have a very strong argument based on prior condition of the building, that was really not known a long time ago, when the two parties, that did include us, that include you, made a decision to say, "Hey, it's kind of simple, we funded the building, how about you maintain it? Sure, let's have someone take a peek at it." They did, it's a very cursory look, nobody argued about it, we went forward and then found out later, hey, a lot of major changes occurred prior to the Celine County's ownership that had an effect on that roof, that no one was aware of, and now, you know, some folks are saying, "Well, you should be totally responsible for it." I think we have a good argument against that. However, I think a common theme that I know you've taken on, and we've discussed significantly, is that the whole thing was intended to be a joint partnership, not a big court ordeal where both entities waste dollars hiring attorneys to go to court. That just seems like a, it's just counter to everything that we've done in Salina and Celine County with the relationship. So, what your proposal says is, is we are going to make good on a joint partnership approach. It says, "You asked for half a million, that's approximately half of the cost, we'll give you half a million, we'll get rid of that aspect altogether." But even so, we don't think that's the best long-term home for our Health Department, for the reasons, Commissioner, that you just stated. And so, I think that's the context behind this, this counter-proposal, or counter-counter, whatever, whatever you want to call it.
Can I, and if it, jump in on this, because I'll...
I'll jump in.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Blanchard, I had a question before, I'm sorry to bring this in after your eloquent remarks there. On that second scenario that you had talked about, with the not stiffing the county, does that assume that there is no city participation for 2014 in the operation of the Health Department?
What it would assume is, is let's say that between now and August 25th, both parties believe that they can stay in an agreement, and work together, and have the intent of forming an interlocal agreement. So, both tax rates are left the same, but falls apart, say, October or November, and we're still at a dissolution situation. In that case, the county's tax mill levy would not be significant enough to provide revenue, support the whole function, whereas ours would still retain what would be, in essence, our portion. So, in order to offset that, since we can't change mill rates for 2014, we pass that timeframe, I think we would simply, in essence, not stiff them by saying, "Okay, we would have normally contributed X dollars," in fairness to the taxpayers, we'd contribute that into the function, and then adjust the mill rate in 2015 to put us to where we really are supposed to be.
But, after January 1, 2014, the city would be removed from the operation...
Yeah, the only time, yeah, the only situation that would require us to do it in that way would be if we were out of the operation. If we were in the operation, both tax rates would presumably be the same.
Remain the same.
Yeah.
I think it sounds like a very good agreement.
Yeah, it looks good.
And I would hope that the county, in, in resolving a community dispute, and I say "community dispute" because I've heard a lot of things in the community, and a lot of people talking about it, and I believe people want us to agree on a long-term agreement.
And I have, one other thing, too, and I, I didn't start out at this point, I've evolved, and my initial feeling was that, "Let's just divide the operation and call it good," because I did not see the discussion going very well between the city and county. And I think that I, I've become more hopeful, and, and this is kind of the culmination of that hope, and I'm, if something happens out of this, I'll be pleased as punch. I think it's the best situation for the, the city of Salina, as well as for the, for Celine County. I do think that we have really made a generous offer here, and I am hoping that it will be considered seriously, and that we will become, we will come to some resolution after this.
I think, too, the way, the way we try to look at things, can't say we always do do it as well as we'd like, but we always try to look at our services, and I would consider this, I mean, it's a shared service, I'll consider it our service at this point, we try to look at the outcomes, what we're really trying to do in the community, to make the community a better place, a healthier place, and it kind of comes back to the phrase, "If it's worth doing, it's worth doing right." Unfortunately, in government, you sometimes have to do things because the state says you have to, or the federal government says you have to. Well, the level that they say you have to do it isn't necess, doesn't necessarily get you to doing it right, doing it best, making the most community impact you can, and we always have tried to get, make the most community impact that we can, and focus on the outcome. And I think, again, the, the positions that you put out there have resembled that approach, and said, "Let's try to do this in the best way we can for the long term, not the minimal way that we can for the long term." And so, hopefully, that will be recognized, and, you know, hopefully, there's a possibility for a joint arrangement in the future, and we can continue to do it as well as we've done it in the past.
Not to get too, too technical, or muddy any of the words here, but earlier, you'd kind of mentioned that the cost of the Health Department, the county employees, is a lot higher for their health services? Is that, did you kind of mention that, that...
Well, the, I was not at the, at the last special Health Department Board meeting, but, and you may, this may be a good question for Vaughn Gibbons...
Okay.
...who was there, but my understanding is, is there was a discussion about the cost of moving the Health Department employees to the county, and that cost was focused on actual health insurance. Currently, they're under the city's plan...
Okay.
And there's a presumption, or there's an estimate of cost of their impact in our plan, it's not really an impact, it's just cost per individual. And if they moved into the county's plan, I believe I saw a number that was pretty close to a quarter of a million dollars more, and I think they could clarify that exact number, but it was significantly more than ours, and so, that's a cost, I don't know what the reasoning is for that cost, and the difference between the plans and the plan structures, didn't look at that, but whatever that is, if there's a significantly higher cost, that's something they have to take into consideration as an impact to a dissolution.
Okay. And that was going to be my question, is, and I guess I wasn't aware that they were under the city plan, I was going to ask if there, we could realize any savings to the taxpayer by taking on the animal shelter employees under our plan, if that would save anything, but it sounds like they already were under that plan, so...
Yes.
Okay, okay. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I just want to address Section 4 in the resolution, and that is, that's kind of where the, the work gets done. And I know that yesterday, Dr. Davis had presented a letter that the Health Board had held a special meeting concerning part of what we're doing here today, not, we're not responding to that directly, but I think that, that our action is a response to, an ongoing response to that, and, but, one of the, one of the comments there was finding a group of people to work together to find this building, and, and I know that we address that in a slightly different way, and so, do you care to maybe outline that?
Sure. Yeah, I can elaborate. Basically, what Section 4 does is it provides sort of a model approach to looking at other buildings in the community, and the first thing we ask is that the county work with the city to seek a suitable existing building that can reasonably meet long-term functional needs of the Health Department. And then, the approach that we say is really just a, kind of a typical approach we use, where the commission applies itself in a policy role, and the staff applies themselves in an administrative role, and we ask that they, that they utilize the expertise of each of the two organizations, the city and county's respective managers and staff persons, that they initially provide whatever policy guidance it is, we'd expect you to do the same. So, if you said, "Jason, we really want to avoid buildings that are 100 years old," that would be a policy guidance-type item. And so, we would get that from you, they would, the county staff would get that from the county commissioners, and then, the two staffs would work together, just the staff persons, as we, as we typically do, that's the model we're used to. Jointly and confidentially inventory existing buildings within the community. Prepare a list of building and site characteristics for each building that's suitable for comparative decision-making, so when we're talking about location, zoning, and size, and age, and just about anything you can think about in there, we look at those characteristics, we try, of those buildings that we've found that meet the general criteria, we compare them with all those things. We would need to utilize the services to a degree of a local architectural firm to assist with comparative cost estimation of any needed renovations. Probably not a real detailed cost estimate, because that would take a long time and cost quite a few resources. The key is, is if we are going to estimate, that we kind of have an apples-to-apples approach to whatever those, let's say, there may be three or four, or two to four buildings that makes some sense, and so, we focus in on those, and we look at the square footage, the amount of renovation, and we try to have an apples-to-apples number. If you use two different individuals, or two, two different approaches to two different buildings, you can't really compare them very well. Certainly, we'd want to coordinate all efforts with the Health Department staff, I mean, the whole function, the whole purpose of all this is for, for them and the services they provide. And then, in the end, the staffs would provide to their respective governing bodies, I put a timeframe of 60 days, that's a target, I think we could be done by then, we'd, we'd work as diligently as we could, to give, give both the City Commission and County Commission a comprehensive written report that includes all that information I just talked about, and a staff recommendation of suitable sites. And there may be more than one suitable site, at that point, there has to be, that policy role kicks in again, and, and we talk about whatever the best site would be. The hope is, is that if the staffs can be allowed to do the technical work, and you have, you know, anywhere from, say, one to three options, hopefully more than one option, that you don't look at any of those options, and neither does the county commission as loser options, that they're all acceptable, and it's just a matter of finding the best option. That's the hope, that's a little optimistic, but it's a hope. And then, obviously, in here, jointly fund the purchase and renovation of an agreed-upon building and site with the city agreeing to issue related bonds. We put the city in there and the bonds, that was part of our financial model for a new building. We recognize the county, to my knowledge, has only issued bonds once in the last 20 years, it's just not something they like to do, it's not something they're familiar with, and, so we could, in essence, look at the same financing approach for an existing building as we did for a new building. Didn't see any reason why we wouldn't want to throw that in as part of it, so, so that's really what it says, and that's the approach that's taken, and I think that can allow us to move a lot more quickly, allow the benefit of the technical expertise that's necessary to do that, and then, we're just gathering all the information and giving it back to you in a way that you can apply your policy direction, and so can the County Commission.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? This time, we'd be happy to take comments or questions from the public.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe, here in Salina. I'd like to clarify a point here about the difference between a city resolution and a county resolution. Maybe we could address that to Jason or Greg.
I can't speak for the county, so I'm not sure I can clarify...
Is it a resolution in the county law?
I...
In the city resolution policy?
That's a fair statement. The county is not, just statutorily, the structure is such that they do not, and cannot adopt ordinances as such, so, as you point out, we would ordinarily address a matter of law by ordinance, and a matter of resolution by, or a matter of policy by resolution, that's a, I think, the best way to make the distinction, and so, the county, I assume, finds themselves using that same term, whether they're addressing a matter of law or policy. That's speculation on my part, but... That's speculation on my part, but that is the extent of their authority.
Well, in the resolution, 1370-22, the second paragraph, it enjoins the city and the county with a policy and a law, because you're quoting county law and city policy. How do you do that? And it becomes a joint resolution.
You're referring to the joint resolution, both the individual resolutions that were approved in 2004?
Yes.
Is that correct? Yeah, you might want to speak to County Councilor Mike Montoya from the county's perspective, but I think as Greg just mentioned, the county may and very well could use the resolution tool both for law and for policy. Therefore, if you look at that, certainly, the city uses a resolution for policy. If the county at that time chose to use it for policy, which I presume, because they don't bind us by law, then we both use it for policy.
I think the county uses it as policy. They don't call it a resolution.
It's probably a good question for the county.
Actually, I can-
Of course, what we're talking about here, we're talking about enjoining two different entities together in a resolution of the city's proposal here.
No, our resolution is simply a means of communicating our intent, our policy intent and commitment to Saline County. It doesn't ask for them to respond in a resolution.
Well, when you reference it in a policy decision, it seems to me that it would be confusing to the public not to know exactly what's going on there.
I think the resolution clarifies both historical information and the city's position. I think it's extraordinarily clear.
Well, you were a little confused when you started, when I asked the question to start with. Now you're sure about it?
Which question?
The question is whether or not it's a city resolution, which is policy-
Correct.
... and the county resolution enjoined into it in a resolution you're trying to pass today. That, to me, doesn't, that's a contradiction.
That's fine.
But anyway, I'll make one final point. We made a lot of hoopy law here about who's responsible for this mess. I mean, this has started a long time ago, and it began when the city did not abide by the memorandum of understanding and not pay to fix the existing building. And that's what I believe you should have done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Greg? Anyone else from the public like to speak on this issue?
Mayor, if I may, or Vice Mayor? Just for the record, I have difficulty letting Mr. Ruska's statement, not responding to it.
Sure.
And Mr. Ruska and I have discussed this between ourselves before, but I believe it is a matter of legal interpretation of that document, and I believe, Mr. Ruska, you are incorrect in your analysis of that document.
Yeah.
So is that quasi-judicial, is what we're talking about here, intermixing two different entities?
I don't understand that point.
Well, quasi, you know what quasi judicial is.
I do know what quasi judicial is.
Almost law, but it ain't law.
No, it's, well, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Ruska.
You're welcome.
Anyone else like to discuss this, or have any questions or comments? Anyone from the Health Board? I see you're all here. We've got all the time in the world up until 11:00.
That's right.
But we'll go up till they kick us out, so-
This'll be short. I just, first of all, I want to say that I think back that this all started one day when I said, you know, we could use a little more space now that we're out of the old building, and it's amazing what has become of that. I had no idea that it would be, take up the time and be such an issue. I appreciate the resolution that's presented before you today, and I think it parallels, certainly, the letter we read yesterday that the Board of Health supported and that we will be reading at 11 o'clock during public comment for the county meeting, too. And I hope that everyone pays good attention to this and sees this as such a good effort to continue to work together. And the two issues we brought up is to continue with an interlocal agreement and taking a step back and really look at what's best as far as building for the Health Department. So I appreciate this very much.
Thank you. With that, if there's no other public comment at all, anyone? Okay. I would entertain a motion on this.
Vice Mayor, if I may.
Oh, I'm sorry?
One very quick point of clarification. In going through the language, I see that in Section 1, the next to the last line where it refers to formally releasing from any and all claims, that should be releasing the city. And I'm sorry, that was an oversight as we were preparing the document-
Should we-
-prior to the meeting.
Have that added into the motion with that modification?
If you would, please.
Okay. I think before we get into this, too, I would just point out that, and I think most people see this from the Health Department, and I can't speak as well as Mr. Blanchard. I usually speak in two- or three-word sentences. Actually, there are about 50-word sentences that really should be two- or three-word sentences. But what I will say is, we came to the conclusion of the new building, we just felt like it was the best thing. It has never really been the Health Department's issue. I know that unfairly in some of the blogs and some of the other things, people have said, oh, the Health Department wants a new Taj Mahal and these things. That's not the truth. You guys have never said, give us a brand-new building, give us anything. All you've asked for was the space to do your work. And this is, and I think people need to understand that this is driven from a passion that you all have for this. It's not a paycheck. I mean, it's probably an okay paycheck, but you could probably do better, I would guess, in the private sector. This is not, this is not a money-driven thing. And I think it's important, I think most people know this, but for the 5% or 10% out there who have thoughts that you guys are just trying to get brand-new, that you're one-everything, great and clean, and that's, you guys have never come along and asked for that. You've just said, we're out of space, we're working in hallways, we've got labs and closets, basically. I mean, you guys are doing a great job over there, and I don't think anybody questions that, and I just think it's important that all you're asking for is just give us the opportunity to do our job and do it the best we can. And we want to do whatever we can to support that, and that's why we're here today. So, again, I just say that more for the people who thought it was your idea from the beginning, that you just wanted new and shiny and everything else. That has not been your idea. We simply thought that was the best way to go for the taxpayers' money. But we're happy to look at anything we can to make your life better and let you provide those services. So I think that's important, that people know that. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve Resolution Number 13-7022 with the amendment-
Section 1?
With an amendment under Section 1. The city agrees to pay the sum of $500,000 to the county to be utilized for the purpose of the Health Department building and to fully release PICO Engineering to provide design services to the county for said purposes contingent upon the county formally releasing the city from any and all claims relating to the building and terminating the existing building maintenance agreement between the two parties.
Second.
I have a motion as second to adopt Resolution Number 13-7022. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries 4-0. There's no other business.
Just like to acknowledge the staff's effort and counsel in the quick turnaround of this and the assistance in this process.
Thank you.
With that, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second?
Motion as second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.